Well, good evening. Tonight is the October meeting of the Acton School Committee, October 10th, Thursday, and we'll begin our meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
We will not need number nine executive session. No need to meet executive session this evening.
Okay. Any comments from the public? All right, let's go on to our two ones, which is celebration of learning, and we're going to get an update first of all on our transcript.
You bet. So, the board and the community understands that we have a new bus company, and we have five new buses, and we've retained a few of the drivers. We also have some new drivers with us, and the drivers have all had a chance to introduce themselves to our staff and community with the opening day. So, we've been really trying to bring them into the AES family and make them feel like they're part of the school even though they are contracted. And we're very lucky that Steve Vine is with us tonight. Steve is actually housed out of the building. He has a space of his own down by the cafeteria, and he's here when we need him. He also drives Busy. So, I'm just going to turn it over to Steve to kind of give you a little bit of update about how it's going this year, and maybe it might be good for any Q and A you might have when he's done with that. Steve?
Good evening. I'm Steve Vine. As I said, I'm driving Busy. I also kind of manage the rest of the fleet. We have five drivers that we can rely on daily. We've got a couple of spares. We've got one training right now that we'll be getting our license hopefully later this Everything's been going great. John, Kim, Amanda, Andy, Mike, everybody has been very helpful in making sure that I get the information I need, the supplies I need to, you know, do my job effectively. We've had, I think, a pretty smooth start to the year. I don't think there's any major hiccups along the way, and I'm hoping that that continues. It looks like news to you and news to me just moments ago. My shed is going to be here by the end of the month.
Hey, you explain what that is? The shed is showing up?
Yeah, yes, you know, I shook enough, you know, branches and, you know, some stuff started falling out because they voted supplies for the winter. So, we're gearing up for the winter as you are here, and hopefully we'll have a smooth transition into winter, and it'd be a nice smooth ride into spring. But everything has been, you know, I'd say, you know, pretty average so far. There's no major, how do I say, malfunctions or catastrophes, so...
Or snowstorms.
Oh, it's not yet.
No snowstorms yet. We've got a couple more weeks for that.
Oh, I hope longer.
But the buses are all equipped with chains.
All equipped with chains. That's good. I mean, last year, I know you started off with buses that didn't have chains. These all have chains on them right now. We've got pre-K seats built into the buses. We've got ample amount of pre-K, like today we had a pre-K trip, and, you know, 18 pre-K. That particular bus had 20 seats, so there's no fussing around trying to, you know, shuffle seats from one bus to another or anything like that. We're good to go on that, too.
And the seats are built in. They pull down like you almost would like an armrest in the back of a sedan. So, when they're not being used, anybody can use them.
Yeah, you just fold it right back up in.
So, I did see Hartford equipment here working on a truck, like a hood was up, and I went, wow, these are new buses.
Oh, every new bus has its own hood works.
Okay, just, you know, a little worry there when I went by.
Well, you know, I don't know what particular day that might have been, but there was a, an issue caused by the radio installation company with some lights and actually one of the stop arms because they had, how do I say, disconnected the power, tried to tap into it. But there was no major ordeal. That was all fixed within a matter of minutes. You know, they scouted out the issue, and that was all good to go.
So, the shed that Steve speaks of, Andy's going to be working with code enforcement with a site plan. So, the first thing we're going to get is like a draft, an architectural drawing of what we want to put near the building that Andy works out of. And if you remember right, there was like a Rubbermaid kind of closet there. So, now we're just looking at a small supply shed that would be there, and we're thinking of putting some electricity in it and then running the buses' power from there to keep the buses warm on the coldest nights. We'll see if it happens with frost coming in pretty soon, but it's on the plan, and I know we'll in a day. It sounds like you got something to do with it.
I was advised that the electricity won't happen.
What's that?
I was advised the electricity won't happen until spring.
Because we have the day, okay. But at least we, at least we'll hopefully have a supply shed in there as we go work with the town, get it approved, and then get it moved. That's the plan.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We still do have your plug-ins out here, though, right?
We do.
Yes, we have enough to plug in. I believe six buses out there, so...
And we do have six buses because we have that spare.
Yeah, we have the spare bus. One bus typically Linda brings home, so it won't generally be here in the wintertime anyways.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have Sharon Prey to talk a little bit about Learning Center A and B. I've updated you a little bit, my weekly updates about Learning Center A and B, but we really haven't talked about it publicly with the committee and the public. So, I thought we would turn this over to Sharon because it's a really neat idea that's been, that Sharon brought to us, that's been implemented, and I think is running extraordinarily well, but I'll let her, let her talk all about that.
Are we on? Look, you got power on? This is room 103, right?
I was warming up, yeah.
Oh.
Let me know if we, if these lights are on banks or not, or if they're all off or all on.
They're banked.
We can bank them, okay.
Yes, it's room 103, right?
You figure, oh, yeah, that one. Yeah, thanks.
Let me try it again.
Here we go. Yeah.
All right, here we go. So, last year, you know, was a learning year for me while I was here and getting to know the staff, getting to know the school and the culture, and of course Lori was new as well and Christie. So, over the summer, we decided that we wanted to do some additional strategies for our response to intervention program, which Lori has fully implemented this year, and they're trying to increase their repertoire of learning opportunities and interventions for our students to participate in. So, given that and the PBIS initiatives that we have here, we decided to put together an idea that would incorporate utilizing learning centers, one of which would be Learning Center B. Learning Center B is actually, I kind of came up with that because when you think about Learning Center B, I think about behaviors. B and A is academic. So, what we did is we came up with a vision for what this would look like, and we decided that we wanted to dovetail it with what we want to do in the school is that that's focusing on relationships and utilizing restorative practices and mindfulness. And also, we wanted to dovetail that with a PBIS pre-referral teacher intervention strategies, which are the continuum of strategies that we try to use every day as good teachers in our classrooms. And then the system of support is the radio calls for classroom support. So, I'm just going to touch upon a few of these. Learning Center A, like I said, is actually designed for academic instruction, and we do small group instruction there and one-on-one. With Learning Center B is where we practice mindfulness and restorative activities. So, if a student is accessing that, that room, that center, then they're going to be doing these things. And there's three levels of support from Learning Center B. Level one is when a student is on an RTI plan, that's a response to intervention plan, or a Section 504 accommodation plan, or on an IEP that states that they have an opportunity to take frequent breaks when they feel their, their body is dysregulated and that they need to calm down or they need to, to just take, you know, a few minutes. So, they have a pass, and they utilize Learning Center B. For five minutes, they go in, they press the timer, and then they, after five minutes, they go back to class. What we do is we write down the student's name, the time they came in, the time they went out, and the level that they came in, and that student would come in at a level one. And that's what we want, is we want students to make choices that before they get dysregulated in the classroom and before they become disruptive, they can actually take the opportunity to advocate for themselves and say, I need a break. So, level two is the next level where, you know, a student is unable to regulate themselves within the classroom and they're not following the expectations. So, what we do is we have a system in place where the teacher would call Amanda, and Amanda alerts Learning Center B that a one-person assist is needed in learning, in the classroom. So, the person who's covering Learning Center B, and it's a rotation every day, we have ed techs and teachers an hour a day covering the learning. It's never without a person. That person responds, that person goes into the classroom and covers the classroom while the teacher comes out of the classroom and actually conferences with the student. So, the conferencing with a student is part of restorative practices in our continuum of strategies. That's the, that's the last piece that you want to do. You know, you want to reteach, you want to prompt, you want to, you know, do all kinds of strategies before you actually get to conferencing. So, if the student is successful with conferencing, then the student reintegrates back into the classroom, and then that support person goes back to Learning Center B. If it is not successful, then that person from, the support person escorts the student to Learning Center B, and then they do restorative practice activity, which is, we call it a stop and think sheet, where they, they think about what they've done, they think about how to restore, what they can do to restore the relationship that they might have damaged with other teacher or another student or maybe a piece of property. So, and then after they do that, they may have an opportunity to listen to an app, which is a mindfulness app, to calm their bodies, and then they go back to class. So, that has also been very successful. The teachers have been very receptive to that methodology. Now, level three, if a student comes in at level two and they're unable to pull themselves together, and they may become unsafe to themselves or to others, then that's when we call for an additional support person, and then administration becomes involved, and then that student may be, may or may not be given, like, different types of consequences, maybe detention, maybe an in-school suspension, and maybe even get sent home for the rest of the day. We've only had to do that once this year. You know, at the end of the day, it was like 2:00. So, I think that's pretty good. And, you know, we have had a couple of in-school suspensions, but we have no other school suspensions, and so, you know, we're, we're pretty pleased with that. Now, in all of these levels, the teacher is required to make a contact home, and the kids have really picked up on that. We've noticed that the kids really don't want us to call their parents, so that's...
Even on the level one?
Pardon me? No, not on level one.
Oh, just on, just on three?
Two and three.
Two and three.
So, two, the teacher contacts the parent.
Yeah.
Three, the administration contacts the parent.
Yeah.
Because usually by the time it gets to a three, it's hit like a major instead of a minor.
Right.
So, we consider that to be much more, you know, we need more intervention for that one. So, we call on the administration to take care of that. So, those are the responses that we're talking about, and when we respond to kids, we always want them to be calm, consistent, brief, immediate, and respectful. And these are things that Dr. Bickford has been working with our staff, and that's why I put her name under there, because the five levels at which we, the continuum strategies are there, the prompt, we try that first, we can redirect, we can reteach, we provide choices, and then we conference. And we want those conferences to be positive, quiet, and private. So, that may take place in the back of a classroom if it's appropriate with the teacher and the student, or it may take place out in the hall, or they may go down, down the hall and sit in a quiet room and do the conferencing. Typically, that would take about five minutes. Also, we purchased this, this book. It's an ebook, and all of our teachers have it, and they are hopefully going through it and trying different activities, which they are. And these are, I mean, there's hundreds of little strategies and activities that they can do in their classrooms that range from one minute all the way up to 30 minutes. So, it teaches the kids how to, you know, breathe properly, so that they can pull themselves together, how they can focus and learn how to visualize and imagine and focus. So, it's really, it's a really great book, I think, and I think some of our teachers are accessing it. So, if you're interested in that, just let me know, and I'll send you a copy. And also, Lori, it's funny because just last week, before I put this, this PowerPoint together for you, Lori sent me this link to an ACD, ASCD, ASCD video that was shared to the field of curriculum coordinators. And so, I thought I would share it with you because it's exactly what we're doing here, and I just think it would give you a better sense of, oops, what did I do?
Oh, it's all right.
Oh, there we go. Yeah. So, how do I make it bigger? I can't see.
Down to the water.
Down in the corner with the two arrows going.
Thank you. Here we go. I can't see the volume. I'm going to have to change it. I don't want having any...
Her volume's up. What about the machine, the white? The white remote? You got it?
Oh, that's a bummer. It was working earlier. It was working at my house yesterday.
We're patient. Don't worry about it.
It was working at my house yesterday.
We're patient. Don't worry about it.
All right, everybody. Then I'll just step outside real quick to continue with what's going on out here. We're doing that same work. Feel free to let me know if you guys need to get help with anything. I'll be able to walk around. That was a breakdown. Do you feel...
I don't know. I just don't feel...
Do you feel like you don't understand materials or...
Yeah. No, anything.
Would you feel a little bit better if I found a peer that you could work with?
Yeah, which is...
Or work with me?
Yeah.
So, how about we try to come back into the classroom, and I'll start off with working with you, and then we can find some peer support that you can work with during the classroom. You want to give that a try?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's try to come back in the classroom, sit down together, and then we can work from there. Sound good? All right. Here, thanks.
So, that's exactly what we're doing here. When we call for support, we don't use iPhones, and they don't actually use an iPhone, but I know. But what we do is we have the radios. So, the teacher would call on the phone and call Amanda, and Amanda will go on the radio and say, one person in, you know, Ms. Damaris's classroom. So, they automatically know. And Learning Center B, if they're available, they'll say, I'm on my way. And if they're not available, they may say, you know, I have a student right now, and that alerts the rest of us who have radios that we need to be a person that responds. So, it might be me, and I would say, you know, I'm on my way, or Mr. Ross, he does that, I'm on my way, or Lori, or Christie, or even Mike, you know, and we go and cover the class for a few minutes, and hopefully it's successful, and it has been so far. And, well, I'll show you the data real quick, so... Let's see, oops, let's back it up. Okay. So, when I put this together, which was the third, the data goes up to the 3rd of October, which is right there. There were 14 students that were accessing Learning Center B, and this is a graph of how many students accessed each day. So, as you can see, the first day at school, well, the second day at school, then there was only one student, and then it went up to more students. And then there was one day here that 17 students accessed it. And then, as of the 3rd of October, it was, it was coming back down to five or eight. That's an eight. So, you know, it is, it is fluctuating, but it is, it is the same, it tends to be the same students, and that's a good thing because as you'll see, excuse me, if you look at these 14 students, four of them have accessed one time only. One of them has accessed six times, two of them's accessed seven times, one nine times, and one 10 times. And then five of them have accessed more than 10 times. So, what, the way I look at this is that for a school of 253 kids, and we're, we're looking at five students who are accessing it regularly, you know, for various reasons, you know, that's, that's pretty good. We're, when you're thinking about PBIS, you don't want more than 5% of your population to be in the red zone, which is the zone that needs a third tier of intervention. And the five students makes up 2% of our population. So, you know, we're on that cusp of, you know, 2% to 5% of our students out of the 253, so I think that we're right there where we should be. So, these are the entry levels. So, if you see that entry level two is green section and entry, entry level one is blue, there's 71% of the students that we talked about, those 14 students, are accessing it at a level one, which is a good thing. And only 28.6% of the students are accessing it at a level two. And then when they exit, we also keep exit data. Those kids have all exited at a level one, okay? Now, since I put this, this together, we have had one student, I believe, that has exited at a level three. But this was as of the 3rd of October, and that happened to be one of those five students. So, you know, we are well aware of our students. We're, the RTI team meets regularly, the PBIS team meets regularly, this team meets regularly, and we all share our information so that we're all doing the same thing and aiming for the same goals, and that's that we provide opportunities for our students to be successful and build relationships. So, by, by the teachers being able to talk with their students and not pass them off to Mr. Ross, or Ms. Lodge, or Christie, or me, or Mr. Corey, you know, it gives them an opportunity to spend time with a student and figure out, you know, how can we work together so that we're, you know, we can be successful in the class? So, that's it in a nutshell. I tried to put this together quickly, but if you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask.
I do. So, this is pre-K to 8. Where is that range, though, the kids use in the room? Would you say from 3 to 8?
Well, pre-K does not use it. Pre-K has not used it. Kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and one fifth grader, I think. So, right now, we have not had any 6 through 8 students access it.
Oh, and there I thought that was the problem.
No.
No, isn't that funny? That's where you go, huh? Not...
I'm going to be honest with you, they have a system that's going very well for them, and, and they can access it, but they're, they're doing, they're doing a good job already, so... And the younger teachers are as well, you know, the, the younger grade levels are as well. It's just that, you know, there are, there are some challenges in the younger grades that require additional support. So, when we talk about early intervention, you know, we talk about, you know, catch them while they're young, so that by the time they get to middle school, they're going to have their act together.
So, learn control of their bodies.
Exactly.
And their minds, yeah.
Exactly.
You don't end up with more than one kid at a time probably accessing it?
Yes. We've had, sometimes there's a couple in there at a time.
Yeah.
But it can be, you know, one student's in there taking a break.
Yeah.
So, they're in a little area doing, you know, with the timer set, doing a stress ball or, you know, one of the mindful apps. Well, if there's somebody in there at a level two, then that person in Learning Center B is going through a reflection sheet with them. And that's the other piece, is the kids that are in there on a level two have to complete a reflection sheet. What happened? You know, what did you do? How do you make others feel when that happens? What can you do differently next time? So, they go through a whole series of questions.
Is that verbal or they have, they're writing it down?
No, they're writing it down. So, if the kids are old enough, they're writing, and then if it's a younger, then it's being dictated. Or they can draw pictures.
Oh, they can draw pictures.
So, things certainly have changed when I went to school. Put you in the hall, or I'd be under the teacher's desk, or tied to my chair.
So, those doctor things that you're talking about, a copy of that goes home to the parent.
That's good.
The parent always knows. And then we try, the teachers circle back with the student either as soon, as soon as they can, so that they can restore, go over the sheet with them and restore any relationship that might have been damaged by, by the incident in the classroom, so...
So, do they, for the level ones, do they ask permission from the teacher to leave?
Yeah, and they have a little lanyard with a little pass that's laminated. It's really, they feel very important, and they put it around their neck, and they walk to Learning Center B, and they take their break, and then they go back to class.
Cool.
And we praise them up and down for that.
Yeah, you know, they're coming. So, the concept was delivered to me in mid-August and said, hey, check this out. And I'm like, wow, this is really interesting. They did great work pulling this together. And I said, well, just make sure that the wind blows so that Learning Center A and B are definitely, the wind's shifting, so it's going with RTI and with PBIS. We can't have anything working against each other, and we can't have one being more important than the other. And here we are, six weeks into it, and the systems really meshed together. It's hard to pull out which piece is which piece, you know, when you're really watching kids.
That's good.
And I got to really thank everybody who put that together. Sharon actually changed her schedule because she knew one of her people that was covering Learning Center B really needed to be in a classroom a certain time. So, she puts on her radio, she is Learning Center B for one of those hours that she talked about in the days that she's here. So, she's right in the middle of this do, which is really cool.
as they can, so that they can restore, go over the sheet with them and restore any relationship that might have been damaged by, by the incident in the classroom, so.
So do they, um, for the level ones, do they ask permission from the teacher to leave?
Yeah, and they have a little lanyard with a little pass that's laminated. It's really, they feel very important. And they put it around their neck and they walk to Learning Center B and they take their break and then they go back to class.
Cool.
And we praise them up and down for that.
Yeah. You know, they're coming. So the concept was delivered to me in, in, in mid-August and said, "Hey, check this out." And I'm like, "Wow, this is really interesting. They did great work pulling this together." And I said, "Well, just make sure that the wind blows so that Learning Center A and B are definitely, the wind's shifting, so it's going with RTI and with PBIS. We can't have anything working against each other and we can't have one being more important than the other." And here we are six weeks into it and the system's really meshed together. It's hard to pull out which piece is which piece, you know, when you're really watching kids.
That's good.
And I gotta really thank everybody who put that together. Sharon actually changed her schedule because she knew one of her people that was covering Learning Center B really needed to be in a classroom at certain times. So she puts on her radio, she is Learning Center B for one of those hours that she talked about in the days that she's here. So she's right in the middle of this do, which is really cool. And it's a really good design. I want to thank, you know, Sharon, Lori, and Christie for really pulling this together and then making the pitch, and here we are.
That's great. That's great.
Anything that helps.
Some of the, some of the comments that have been made in the past is that it's no, um, it's not really any kind of punishment to go sit in the principal's office for a while or to go sit in Mrs. Oliver's room for a while and, and.
I don't know. I don't know. I didn't want to put a server out of that.
But, I mean.
I'll remember that.
But when this happens, I mean, none of these reflections are taking place and they don't have, it's just like, "Oh, we, I'm out of the classroom and I'm, hi, everybody," you know? So I think this.
It's all like doing it either.
No. So I, I think this is, this is, uh, great to implement something like this to, to work along with the PBIS and with all the behavior issues that pop up. It's better than chasing people down the street, isn't it?
Yep.
Yes, it is, isn't it?
Thank you so much. Thanks for putting that together. That's, that's great. And it's good to know.
Good job.
It's good to know, um, how all the disciplinary things are, are being approached now in a much more effective and in a much more positive manner. I think positive is the word I like to, like to use because we know when kids don't act well, it's, they have a reason for it. And this gives you as a staff the opportunity to find out what some of those reasons are and to help them work through them. It's great.
I have one more question, that the thoughtful mind, um, program, is it a program or a book?
Oh, the book.
The mindful, it's a book?
Yeah, it is a book.
Well, it's an ebook.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Is that just a link that you could send to us so we could look at it?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great.
It's actually, it's right in the, um, in the PowerPoint. Did you get a copy of that? In your, in your?
No.
No, we didn't. But that would be, that would be nice to have, yeah. Good. Alright. Any other questions?
I see we have a new contract for our oil, $2.10 a gallon.
Yes.
I'll be like, "Oh."
You, you went on to the next thing.
Yeah, hold on. Hold that thought, hold that thought. Yes.
Hold that thought, okay.
Alright, we're going on to the consent.
Can I get some of that? $2.10 a gallon.
Going on to the consent agenda.
Oh, I see.
Let's, uh, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is that it?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Five thirty-four, Jen.
Do you need that? The time off of this?
No. Thank you, though.
Okay, let's move on now to number four. And, uh, Jeanette, we'll start with you. Any questions that you have for any of the administrators? Go for it.
Well, I see we have a contract for oil, $2.10.
You are correct.
Right? And we're still with Electricity Maine.
Yes.
And the workshop. Can I talk about the workshop you guys went to with Drummond and Woodson?
Yes.
All the things, new things we learned, you learned.
Yes, those are my notes from that law conference that Kim and I went to. A lot of changes.
Yes.
Those are my notes, yeah.
Pages and pages of changes.
And a book came with it too that I didn't, I wasn't going to shit. I mean, it's a pretty healthy book, but if you ever want to take a look at it, a lot of laws got passed, the second session.
So we need some policies, yes?
We will, absolutely.
Updated, newer packets.
We're starting.
Some of the things, right.
There was no real new stuff. It was basically just changing.
Well, we never had vaping, so now we got to bet in there, right?
It's, uh, we actually covered it. In, uh, a lot of policies that they said we needed changes, I went through and reviewed some of the policies and we actually covered what we needed. So the policies that are in here, what they are, are ones that we just had to change some of the wording, right?
Right.
To match the new legislation.
Yeah.
There are some policies that are going to change, which you mentioned in your report too, about, uh, with the teachers and stuff.
Composition.
But they're not going to be another year or so before they're actually.
And the evaluation part.
And some of the laws won't change policy.
Right.
But it'll change practice.
Right.
Meaning, you know, there may be a policy that there needs to be an evaluation committee, but our policy doesn't say who should be on it, but the state law does. So we need to make sure that we follow the state law and the composition of that kind of a committee. So a process like that would be, would make a change for us.
Any, anybody else have some questions for?
Um, mostly the.
Or any of the, uh, great reports? They look good. I enjoyed going through them all. How's the book fair going?
Fantastic.
Did you have, uh, did you have a lot of parents last night? Was last night parent's night?
Last night was.
Family night?
Yeah. The place was, I saw.
Busy.
Very busy.
Very busy.
We opened it up, set it bigger and, um, practiced a little bit different this year. Snacks, food, chairs in the cafeteria. Lori and Patty both were there helping out with that. And Rachel Crystal was in the gym, which we opened up for reading so people could bring in their stuffies and sleeping bags and pillows and so kids were coming in in their PJs and getting books and then going to the gym and reading. It was fantastic. Absolutely wonderful evening.
Good. That's great.
Take a peek at the library on your way out. It's pretty neat.
Yeah.
It's pretty neat. We can turn the lights on.
Yeah, spilling out into the hall.
Oh, it is, ice cubes.
Yes. I was commissioned to put my, my big ice cubes out there. Very cute.
Okay, no other, no other, uh, comments? How about you? Do you have something you'd like to share from your?
Just for the committee and the public, tomorrow is a school day for Acton Elementary School, but not a school day for Sanford High School. First time in a long time that we've broken away from that. Reason is, we're looking at a PD day in March because it makes more sense. We just had two day, two PD days in August, early September, and to have one now, we thought we'd be better off using that in March. Sanford is taking theirs. They may have more PD days, they may have, I don't know their schedule, but I know that they have school tomorrow. Uh, we have school tomorrow and they do not. So that's one thing I wanted to get out there in public. And, um, trunk or treat is Saturday on 10/26 at 4:00 PM. Always a, always a community. It's several committees favorite, but certainly a favorite of Acton and we draw from, I think from greater York County for that, this place is backed. Um, just a quick shout out to Jim. Andy took some well-deserved time off. Um, really glad that he does in October, uh, that he does. And Jim was here and we, Jim, Jim would never miss a beat. Guy was on top of everything that we needed and Andy knows that when he can, takes a few days a year off, that Jim's going to take care of business. So shout out to Jim, he did a nice job. Glad to have Andy back. And just one quick one, I'm going to just, to Lori, just briefly, and I know it was in her packet, but I got outstanding reviews of, um, feedback from a Tuesday PD session that Lori engineered with the K-2 group and will soon be doing 3-5 at the end of the month. And I thought it would be really nice just to, just a few words as to what that was and, and kudos to Lori for lining that up for our teachers because the teachers really came back pumped from that, from that day in their own classroom.
So it builds on the, um, reading workshop training we did in June, um, where all the teachers were there that teach, um, reading, K to eight. And then, um, they were provided with a resource called Reading Mini Lessons. And it's sort of, um, an approach too that dovetails with the school-wide Title I model. Um, so the consultant was here on site and will be here for three days throughout the year, one per trimester. Um, we'll go into the classroom, model a lesson. So we had substitutes in K-1, so those teachers could come in and the teacher modeled, or the consultant modeled in Chad's room. Um, modeled a mini lesson. Teachers sat in the back of the room, kids were on the rug. Um, they had a lab sheet to fill out, watching the consultant for what she was doing. Um, the Title I staff was in there at the same time. Um, so there were five or six adults in there watching the consultant teach the kids. And then Chad actually ran the workshop model, the stations that he's got set up with the kids for reading. Um, so he was meeting with kids and other kids knew what they were doing because he puts it up on the, on the projector. Once reading workshop came to an end, the consultant finished by having the kids share, um, what they had done during reading workshop time. And then, um, the rest of the day, I covered Chad's room and the sub-state in K-1 and the teachers actually met with the consultant. They debriefed what they watched, um, asked questions of how she did certain things and why. And then they, um, were able to spend the whole afternoon planning, um, understanding the book and the resource they're using. Um, she gave them some other resources to use. And they were actually able to plan now, from now until like a month out, of how they're going to continue to implement mini lessons and get, um, the workshop model set up, so.
Great.
3-5 will have it, um, it's the same group, but a different consultant. The consultant that worked with Chad and Norma and Sylvia the other day is a K-2, her Kate, she's a K-2 focused. That's her expertise at the early elementary. And then when Kelly comes to meet with 3-5 on October 28th, she's more of a middle level. So she'll probably do a similar setup, um, for them and model a lesson and, and then talk to them about what this needs to look like.
Nice. Yeah, I was, I was wondering about that. In fact, I'm glad you brought that because, yeah, yeah, I thought that sounded like a great idea.
Well, you know, the embedded professional development, right there on site, and then teachers can use it the next day and they now have a contact, you know, that if they have questions in the meantime. And then my goal is between now and then, when she comes back, what can I do to support, um, the goals that they set and the planning that they did?
Yeah, I think, I think it's great too that they had, they had that, um, planning time together right, right after they saw the consultant. I mean, that's really important because a lot of times you have a workshop and somebody comes in and shows you something, you say, "That's great." And then, you know, you're back to business, but to have that time to really process it is, is good.
Yeah, and I actually went into first grade this morning and she was already doing, um, a similar mini lesson to what had happened the other day, so.
Nice.
Yeah, it was, it was good.
Nice. Anybody else got any questions about that?
No, I just like the professional development.
Yeah, that's, it's great.
Giving the teachers the tools.
Giving them, yeah, that's great. Do you have anything else?
I'm all set, thank you.
All set? Alright then, let's go on to progress monitoring reports, number five with Lori.
So this is just, um, fall data from the NWEA. Um, I did it a little bit different. I want you to be able to follow, um, cohorts of students. So, um, when you get this, math is first. I did fall to fall, uh, keeping in mind that, you know, we'll see dips in the fall anyway because of the summer break. Um, so there are some, um, I think, places where we certainly will see some improvement come winter. But what I try to do is, um, where you'll see the K-1, 2, the different colors is, that's the same group of kids. So that you can see the K students in fall of 2018 and then where they are as first graders in the fall of 2019. Um, what we'll see is the K-1, 2 group, um, really have shifted. You're going to see more kids over in the greater than 50% column, which is where we want them to be. 50% of kids or that group is above, um, meeting the grade level benchmark or above the grade level benchmark. So we're making some shifts there. You see a dip in third grade and I, that's the second to third grade kids because this is the first time, it's a different test. Once they hit third grade, the test no longer reads to them. So it's, it's a much different design. So I think, you know, we have to figure that into the data and so that's why I kind of highlighted that section because it doesn't, you know, always look good, um, knowing that we, we've dipped there. But I also think that again, it's, it's the type of test, and it's a longer test for them. So it's a little bit longer and, and they actually have to read everything. So in math especially, you know, if they struggle with reading, they're going to struggle with some of the math stuff because they have to read it as well. Um, you won't see a big change, I don't think, across the board. In fact, when I looked at the bottom line, most of the numbers, you know, didn't really change all that much. Um, but it really does give us a focus for, especially with the school-wide Title I model. Last year, we could just, um, support literacy and right now, we do have, um, Rachel and Sheri able to get in to do some math support. Not as much as we'd like, obviously, but, um, the way their schedule is set up, they are able to work with some groups of, of the math. So I did the same with literacy, that's the second page. Um, again, what you'll see is, is K to 2, um, you'll see the shift. I think what's interesting, and, um, I was talking to John about this today, is the pre-K. You know, kids going into, going into kindergarten. You know, you've only got, uh, very few kids that are falling, you know, below grade level at this point in time in the year. So, um, interesting to see if that trend continues with the pre-K program that we have in place. So, um, we have zero kids that are K-1, 2, below the 20th percentile. They're, you're in the middle, they're in the, all that low priority range or above, which is, um, which is big. That's huge for them in literacy. Um, and then again, the rest of it is kind of sort of stagnant. Um, but, you know, again, the third graders are now reading their, um, assessment versus, versus having it read to them. So these are the numbers we'll now work from fall of 2019. I have the list ready of who those students are in each of those categories, ready to go to the cohort and specifically ask, "What are we doing for those kids? Are these the kids that are being double dipped and supported during literacy by both the teacher and some Title I support? Um, how are we getting them what they need?" And then let's look at math and is there any way we can build in some math support for those kids to move them along? Because I like to keep following those cohort of kids and make sure that they're moving in the right direction.
It's nice to look at the colors and see how they go from one grade to the next. I like that. Thank you for doing that. Anybody have any questions for Lori on these?
For the math, was there something for the, the, uh, current sixth grade? Something, a big change for them or change in something?
No, not really. Yeah, so that did, they did take a.
They took a little, little dive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do have, um, the state is offering three workshop sessions, um, around math because I think they're seeing across the state that math is an area that people are struggling with. Um, so they're doing a series of three workshops that, um, will be registered to go to, um, just so we can get some extra resource, see what other people are using and what the state is suggesting for resources. And it also brings different schools to the table to talk about what's working, what's not working, so.
Next month, we'll, we'll look at math again. We'll have the publicized MEA results that we can look at by, if not next month, then definitely in December. And, you know, we'll be talking budgets too and we'll, we'll align our needs academically with, with a credible budget.
Good. Alright. All right. Thank you very much, Lori. No committee reports tonight? Well, we do. Actually, we have the policy committee, and those are, are they all updates?
Yes.
They're all updates. So, so it's not anything we have to do a first or second meeting on. We just have to approve them as amended, right, as updated?
All of them, but one policy is due to the seminar that John and I attended. One of them, the one on student wellness, that was an update between the wellness committee. So that would be Carol and Christie and...
Holly.
Holly. They all, yeah, and they all got together to make some changes that was presented to them by the 502. But, no.
She did it. She called right into it.
I know 210.
510.
Yes, 510, sorry. And so that's why you'll see a little red changes, a little green changes, is because they kind of, they worked on that one collaboratively to make the changes that they were looking for.
So you have your little bundle of policies that have been gone over with the policy committee, and Kim adapted for, updated either to meet the new laws that have been passed so that we're in compliance with all those, with our policies. So I'm going to look for a motion to accept as updated policy number 621, student wellness, JL student wellness, policy ACAD hazing, policy IK, Standards Achievement Learning System, policy JHB, student attendance and truancy, JEA, compulsory attendance, and finally, JLCD, administration of medications to students. Now, look for a motion to update, to accept all of those as updated and amended as of this date.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion on any of them? No? All in favor? So moved. Any old business?
Or is there any new business to vote on this evening, which is mostly updates?
No new business, no old business?